Now called order the regular meeting Thursday, May 23rd, 2019. Like to remind everyone to silence their phones and if you have an item on the agenda that you'd like to speak on, there's blue slips in the back of the room. Fill them out and give them to Ms. Jessica before the item is called upon. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Collins' daughter, Ms. Gwen Guillory.
Good evening. First of all, I'd just like to give praise and glory and honor to God. We just thank you, Father God, for today. We thank you for this evening. We thank you for watching over each and every one of our families tonight. We thank you, Father God, for you giving us spiritual wisdom and knowledge and understanding, common sense and good judgment, Lord, to do your will. We thank you, Father God, for everyone that is here today. We thank you, Father God, for our leaders, the leadership. We thank you, Lord, for our police jurors, for everything that they have done, is still doing and about to do in our community, also in our parish. We thank you, Lord, also for the police jury and everyone that works with them to make everything happen. And, Lord, we thank you even for the ones that's behind the scene. We thank you for them because they have prepared for this meeting tonight. They have prepared, Lord, just getting us ready. And we just thank you, Father God, for your anointing, your blessing upon each and every one of us. Everyone that has traveled to and from, near and far, give us traveling grace. Protect us and keep us out of harms way and out of danger, God. And, Lord, we just thank you for what you have done, what you're about to do. And, Lord, we give you praise and we give you glory and honor in Jesus mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Guillory. Roll call, Ms. Kathy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Barris?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Farnum?
Here.
Mr. Guidry?
Here.
Mr. Guillory?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
Vice President Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan is out of town on business this evening. Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie?
Here.
And President White.
Here, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item four, presentation from Mr. Braylon Harris, Program Director of Impact Agency on Activities Related to Positive Change Initiative. Ms. Mayo. Got you.
Go ahead, Mr. Harris.
Excellent. Again, we want to thank you all for having us today. My name is Braylon Harris. I reside at 1465 Manchester Road, Highway, Louisiana. Again, it is good to always be in front of the police jury, especially on tonight, where we're able to give a one-year update of the Positive Change Initiative that you all are partakers in, contributors to, and most importantly, you all allow us to be housed in a very, very important room there at the 901 Lake Shore Drive Building on the second floor. Truly, we are sincerely grateful for that. In front of you, the red sheet that you have is our 2018-2019 update. You'll be able to see several of the, many of the things that we have done with our young men over the last year. And again, I believe we've been very, very successful. Hopefully, you've been able to see some of the things that we've done, being published, whether it's in the newspaper or social media or as well in other forms as far as television and radio and things like that. We have put together a small video for you all to kind of see visually, to be able to see exactly some of the things that we've done. And we'll come back after the video and just share just a few more things and answer any questions.
Anybody on the team that's down 28 to 56 ain't left. Everybody in here says you want to be a legendary champion. You down 28, 56, listen up. Switch up your playbook, change your game plan, you're making the game. Change your game plan.
If they're causing all the turnovers, they're shooting on the wrong basket, so you need to change up your roster.
Right now, you said you're 28, 56, you need to change up your play.
Need to change up your roster.
Go change your game plan, you're making the game.
Welcome to the Impact Agency. Change agents, changing their perspective and perceptions of African-American males in America.
But I'm here to tell you that the projects does not produce your condition. It's your condition that makes the projects. And that's really, even though our story is a unique Chicago story, and I came down here in 1997, really, it doesn't matter.
We call this a stop vote. We're gonna learn how to read this quick. And this is the main thing that people don't understand. Once you understand this, then everything's gonna be good for you.
Look at how deep they are, tired. I had the opportunity to shake their hands. And let me tell you, this is important. I shook their hands and each one had a firm grip. Each one looked me in the eye. Each one had a look of success.
Welcome to the Impact Agency. Change agents, changing their perspective and perceptions of African-American males in America.
Again, as the video is ending, I definitely want to be able to say thank you all, to each of you all, for what you all have made available to our young men. Again, there were multiple trips that were taken. We've been to the Louisiana Legislature. We were able to go to Houston, Texas. You saw that trip there. We were able also to go to New Orleans to the Supreme Court, as well as Angola and several other areas here in the city as well that we were able to be a part of. As you can see, we've grown from 40 young men, we're nearly at 80 young men. We'll be taking on the next 20 in the next month, so we'll be at 100 young men that we have impacted, and we're continuing to grow the program as well. So we're very, very grateful to Mr. John DeRosier, who houses us there at the District Attorney's Office. I'm very grateful for our staff, Mr. Eric Dozier and Mr. Ronald Blanchard, who is here with us as well. Very, very grateful for them, as well as all of our partners. At this time, I would like Mr. McKenzie Collins, who goes to Southwest Charter, to just give a final thank you. He's in the seventh grade and he's been with Impact Agency for the entire year.
I'd just like to start off by saying thank you for letting us just be able to have this room, be able to send the funds for us to be able to make these amazing and life-changing trips, because if we wasn't able to do this, then I probably wouldn't be the person that I am today. Before, I was very disrespectful, talked a lot, but now that, now with Impact, that helped me clean up my act, so none of this would be possible without you guys, so I thank you.
Again, I don't know if there's any questions or any details that anyone would like to know at this time.
You do, sir. Mr. Guidry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Harris, let me just say first off, what an outstanding group of young men. Let me just point out something for all of you that's here tonight. I have a little nephew that's in there, Devin Stevens. Stand up, please. Before he got into the group, he would always say, "What you need, Uncle Kevin?" I say, "Huh?" He said, "Now it's sir, mister, you making a difference in these young kids' lives." And sometimes they just need to know, somebody's looking out for them. And I was down in Baton Rouge when you guys was there at the Capitol and looking at the way these young men carry themselves. See, I didn't have this when I was growing up. I probably would've turned out a little bit better, okay? But let me just say, these kids have a heck of a start, and they've got some people that's behind them that not only care for them, but love them. And I just can't say enough, but the one thing that I want to ask tonight, how are we gonna continue this? Do we have funding in place? Because that's important.
Absolutely. I know there's two things at the bottom of the white sheet, the preview for this year. There's several ways we want to continue to improve. One, we're bringing in another 20. Our sixth graders are coming in, and so we'll be right at 100. But two or three things that we are looking at, you've heard Mr. John DeRosier speak of Impact Pink, or the girls' division is something that we're looking at. That's just as important as the young men, as well as we are going to have approved next week, $150,000 grant through the LCLE that is going to allow us to have an SVU unit. Those who have been a part of violent offenders and being violently offended will be able to bring in through that grant another 50 to 75 young men and women that is targeting those who are, you know, in the violent element, have been exposed to it and have partaken in it as well. So we've got that grant on the road. We also have a Project Safe Neighborhood grant, that'll, about $30,000 grant that should be approved in the next two weeks as well, that's gonna allow these young men to do more with the technology that you've seen as far as videography, as far as music and things along those lines, to be able to see those things in a positive light and learn the productive side of those things as far as what can be, how they can become, that can become a career for them as well. So those are the areas that we're looking to expand in the next year.
That's, that's so much of a positive situation that these young men are in, and I just, it just warms my heart. When I look at them and I just say to myself, you know, let's not let this stop. Let's, let's keep this. And I can't applaud Mr. John DeRosier in the very back enough for what he's done in helping these young men, because in all honesty, maybe, Mr. John DeRosier, if you wasn't supporting this, you may, you probably would be seeing a lot of these young men. And we're so thankful for you taking the time just to be a part of these young men's lives. So I want to personally thank you for that, because I can see what it's doing, not only for these young men, but for our community. And again, Pastor, we thank you. Please keep up the good work.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just kind of echo a little bit what Kevin said. I want to thank you for having the fortitude, the enthusiasm and the vision for what you do. I know it can't be easy, but you look like you're fit for the task. And I too would like to thank the District Attorney for his interaction in the community, with your involvement and the other things that he has done to make Caukshu Parish a safer place to live in. I yield back, Mr. President, but thanks again, okay?
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, you know, I was there at the Capitol last year when some of you came in and, you know, just when we were watching on this video and you guys just walking in, man, it's a huge, it's a huge presence. I hope you understand how, how big of an effect that has. Buddy of mine, Mr. Carlos McGee, always used to say, feathers make the bird. You know, your attire, the way you keep yourself, it says so much without even opening your mouth. Take this stuff to, back to your schools, you know, this, man, that, you don't understand, other people will look up to you, even you might be younger, but some people, it'll catch, it will catch on. So don't ever deviate from what you guys are learning together. You know, you, you're gonna come out ahead. Just stay, stay the course. But you guys, you look sharp. I know you're doing big things. I can look in your eyes, you're, y'all are all gonna do well. So even after you're, you know, I guess in the high school, they rotate out of this...
And when they graduate. So they're with us the whole way.
Well, just stay with it. Stay with it, guys. Good job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Barris, Mr. Guillory.
Thank you, Mr. President. I talked to Mr. John and I don't think he told you yet, Mr. Braylon, but the guys, we'll have a little job here in a few weeks. We're gonna be cleaning all the brick columns in Oak Park, so he volunteered them, so I don't know if they knew about it yet, so I'm telling them now, we're gonna be cleaning all the brick columns in Oak Park. So, but thank you, guys. You guys are great. Thank you.
Absolutely. We have collaborated with other agencies. We've been on about 1,000 hours of community service these young men have racked up the first year. So they've been very, very busy, so we look forward to that task. Last year, we got to put up the memorial flags over at Cumbria Funeral Park. We didn't do that this year, but any task that you all think they could be visible and valuable as a part of, we want to be a part of that initiative.
Ms. Mayo.
Mr. DeRosier, Mr. Harris, Mr. Blanchard, Mr. Dozier, I want to commend you guys on the hard work that you are doing, what you are instilling, the tools that you are instilling in these young men is something they could take with them throughout life and succeed. Nothing good comes easy. What you're doing is not easy, but it's for the good, and in the long run, it's gonna pay off. Five to 10 years from now, I would like to see where these young men are at, see where they're going and what they're doing with their life. But understand, young men, for these people to take the time out of their day to instill what they instilling in you is a blessing among itself, because not too many people have the patience and is willing to take the time out to do what they are doing. And keep doing what you're doing. I know it's hard, but it's paying off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Good afternoon, everybody. We have thanked the boys to work with the preacher and Mr. John DeRosier, but we also forgot to thank the parents that give their time and work with those kids. If the mother and father wasn't there to help them out, they wouldn't be able to do anything, so we thank them also, because of our mother and father help, we're not going anywhere. And thank you, Rev. Appreciate it, y'all.
Have a blessed day.
Any further comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Y'all wanna do a picture?
Mr. Harris, is there any way possible we get a picture of these young men? Yes, could they just come right up along the front, here, and take a picture?
Good job, guys.
Good job, fellas. Great job, man. Great job. Great job. Come on, come on, come on. My little nephew, hey, what's happening? Up here, Devin. Where you at? Around here in the front with your little shorts, y'all. Come on around here. Look at that, short, short, short. Let them take one. Come on, let them take it. Kevin, let them take one. That's what we gonna do. I like the suit choices.
I like the suit choices.
Keep up the hard work, guys. Good job, Kevin. Thank you, Mr. DeRosier. We're gonna move on to item five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have four applications before tonight and recommend they be approved.
The motion by Mr. Farnum and the second by Mr. Collins to approve. Item six, or do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Six, consideration of approving payments to all current invoices and advise regular monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated April 17th, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item eight, consideration of adopting a resolution to approve the following abandonment application, 28-8 Boyd Landry Road in Ward 4 to abandon and revoke the original dedication of the east 910 feet of Boyd Landry Road. I need a motion to approve or deny the abandonment.
I approve the emotion, I mean, I approve the abandonment. I second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont.
So we're gonna need to go back.
Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item nine, consideration of adopting and ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 46-65 Evangeline Highway in Ward 5, rezone from mixed residential R2 to recreational vehicle park to allow recreational vehicle park three spaces. I have a motion to deny rezoning by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Scott. Do we have any discussion? Is there an applicant here that would like to speak on this item? Hear none? Motion to deny is carried. Item 10, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 428 East A Bay Road in Ward 3 to rezone from mixed residential R2 to general commercial C2 to allow commercial development parking lot. I have a motion by Mr. Scott to approve rezoning and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Ten carries. Eleven, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the following rezoning application, 26-8 Swallow Lane in Ward 1, rezone from mixed residential R2 to multifamily residential to allow multifamily residential development, 11 duplexes. I have a motion by Ms. Mayo to approve rezoning and a second by Mr. Collins. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Twelve, adopting ordinance to levy the following 2019 general purpose tax millage rates.
Don't move.
Caukshu Parish, except the city of Lake Charles Town, Vinton, city of Dequincy, city of Saffir and city of Westlake, 4.18 mils. Caukshu Parish within corporate limits of city of Lake Charles, town of Vinton, city of Dequincy, city of Saffir and city of Westlake of 2.09 mils. I have a motion by Ms. Trimmie and a second by Mr. Guillory. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Thirteen, adopting ordinance to levy the following 2019 maintenance tax millage rates. Criminal justice system maintenance, 3.02 mils. Courthouse complex and correctional center maintenance, 3.12 mils. Mosquito control maintenance, 2.1 mils. Airport district number one maintenance, 60, 0.60 mils. Burton Coliseum or agricultural services maintenance, 1.43 mils. Health unit maintenance, 2.37 mils. Juvenile detention maintenance, 3.33 mils. Road and drainage maintenance, 3.88 mils. Ward 3 fire protection district number two maintenance, 11.54 mils. Library maintenance, 5.51 mils. Sewer's district number 11 of Ward 3 and 8 maintenance, 9 mils. Water Works District 5 of Ward 3 and 8 maintenance, 5.24 mils. Water District number 2 of Ward 4 maintenance, 6.38 mils. And Water Works District 12 of Ward 3 maintenance, 10 mils. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Trimmie. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Guillory, or Mr. Andrew Pont?
Not me.
Mr. Barris.
Just wanted to make this, I just wanna, I'm the only one that waved. I want to make, make sure that we get this out there for all the folks keeping score at home, that these are tax millage rates as submitted by the parish tax assessor, Mr. President. I yield back.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Abshire.
I have a question, Mr. Green. With the increase in, in property tax over the past few years, do we have any plans to roll back any of these millages?
Well, actually, the rollback question comes up each assessment, excuse me, reassessment year, which is every four years. 2020 will be the next one. Police jury has rolled back every four years, almost all of its taxes with very few exceptions. So I guess I would answer yes, barring something surprising. Our plan, our default is to recommend rollbacks in those reassessment years, but that's when it comes into play.
Only during a reassessment year?
Well, that's when it, that's when all public bodies actually have to go over that now, meaning that's when the decision has to be made. You don't, you don't have to roll it back each year. Now, I will say on this one, the mosquito control tax, Tammy and I look at these closely each year, and we both agreed on this one. That's actually levied 2/10 of a mil less than it's been, simply because we look at fund balances and things like that, so.
That's one we can't do without, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, and don't worry, we're not, we're not gonna put that in jeopardy, but we certainly look at those rates each year, and the good news with the, as you mentioned, the higher tax base, it ensures that these don't have to go up, because I think, as you know, if the tax base were going down, it would be a... Because I think, as you know, if the tax base were going down, it would be a roll backward. If you held, or it would be higher millages just to get it. So, it keeps these at the rates they are. And then, each four years, you look at the rollback millages, and I suspect there'll be a lot of those next year to where these would go down. But Tammy can probably answer better on the reassessment year question, or rollback question.
Mr. Abshar, I think Brian explained that. But we have the ability to levy less than what, than each year. We can analyze these each year and do something less. But normally, we keep them the same, with the exception of mosquito control, we did go down. But next year, we will look at the, they will present millages to see, do we want to roll up or roll down? And that's when we will do that.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item fourteen, consideration of adopting a resolution ratifying the following actions taken by myself as a result of flooding in roadways and waterways.
Move on fourteen, both bullets.
May 13, 2019, local government proclamation of state of emergency, and May 13, 2019, executive order 2019-03, which imposes restriction of all commercial, of commercial vessels and boats only along the Calcasieu River and English Bay area. Of a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Brayne. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Item fifteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving, as soon as by Recreation District Number One of Ward Three of Calcasieu Parish, Louisiana, of not to exceed $10 million general obligation refunding bonds, series 2019.
Move on fifteen, second.
Of a motion to move on fifteen by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Gilery. Do we have any discussion? I do. Can someone explain all of that right there? That's $10 million.
Yes, sir. This actually, well, first of all, when a district has to go for, to the bond commission for any bonding issues, gotta get approved by you. So, you get a lot of these from the districts. This particular one is actually not for an expansion. They are, in essence, refinancing their current debt issuance for a better financial situation. Is it like if any of, anybody would refinance a home? That's what this is for. So, it isn't $10 million of expansion of recreation facilities. It's primarily a refinancing is what it is.
All right, thank you, sir.
Does that help?
We have any other discussion? Mr. Abshar.
Is that a public offering or private?
It would be public. Now, Mr. Dellafield, who submits these on behalf of the district, I don't think he could be here tonight unless I'm mistaken. I wish I could answer more. Is there something maybe in the letter that we received from him?
Here's, thank you.
Do we have any objection? Fifteen carries. Sixteen, consideration of adopting a resolution amending section 6.2 holidays of the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury Human Resource Policy Manual to include the following as annual parish holidays effective with the calendar year 2019. Christmas Eve, December 24th, and New Year's Eve, December 31st. I have a motion by Mr. Bears and a second by Mr. Collins. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Fornum.
I'd like to take these one at a time, if you would, instead of following together.
All right. Can I get a motion?
I move on A. Second.
I'll move on B.
Second.
Vote on A.
All in favor for A. Ms. Kathy, roll call, please. Excuse me.
All righty, this will be a reverse roll call to approve Christmas Eve, December 24th. Mrs. Tremi?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Ma, oh, no. Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilery?
Yes.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mr. Fornum?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Brayne?
Yes.
Mr. Bears?
Yep.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Yes.
And Mr. Abshar?
Yes.
The vote was unanimous.
A passes.
Yes, sir.
Move on B.
Second. A motion by Mr. Landry for New Year's Eve and a second by Mr. Bears. Roll call, Ms. Kathy.
Yes, sir. Starting with the As, Mr. Abshar?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Yes.
Mr. Bears?
Yes.
Mr. Brayne?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Fornum?
No.
Mr. Gidry?
Yes.
Mr. Gilery?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
And Mrs. Tremi?
Yes.
Motion carried, thirteen to one. Twelve to one.
B carries. Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
Item seventeen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving industrial taxes exemption application for the instrument and valve service company with respect to its manufacturing facility to be located at Calcasieu Industrial Park Lot H. I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Bears.
Thank you, Mr. President. What, I mean, is this 100%, 50%, 80%? What?
Mr. Bears, on the, under the rules the state has passed as of, I think, August of last year, the way it works now, and this would fall under that time period, the State Board of Commerce and Industry votes first on these applications. They have voted on that and voted in favor back in April. It then goes to the local bodies.
I under, but what's the percentage?
80%. And what I want to say is, the voting, I wanted to preface it because the option, the only option the locals have now is to basically vote thumbs up or down on the proposal, which is 80%. And the old rules, each body could vote at whatever percentage they felt was appropriate. But here, it's 80% max, not 100, but it can't be less either. So, yeah, I'm sorry, that's the long answer for 80%.
And I will ask the same question to make sure we have it read and said on TV, just to make sure. Because there are people that are looking deep into what we're saying and how we're saying it. So, I apologize, Mr. Landry, for asking the same question. I owe you two minutes. Mr. White.
Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. Caught me off guard there for just a second. You're saying that the legislature last year voted to move, in other words, it used to be 100%. Am I correct?
Yeah, yes. The reason I'm pausing, it was actually the governor has the authority on these, what they call ITEP rules, industrial tax exemptions. So, there was, it was a lot of good overhaul of these rules that they follow. And prior to this, it wa, it could be 100%, but it, it didn't. The locals had a choice of approving something less, but yes, it, now, just, prior to August of 2016, it was 100% and locals had no say-so whatsoever. Now, you, as the police jury, as the school board, and the sheriff, have that ability to put in your two cents on it, but it's 80%. Prior to that, yeah, it was 100.
But to me, it's a no-brainer to vote for something like this. I mean, we are Petra Camp Parish, and we do appreciate the industry that moves into here. I mean, it's the lifeblood of the parish, and I think everybody here knows that. I could say more, but I'm not. I yield back.
Sir, Mr. Abshar.
It's a five-year exemption?
Yes, sir. And at that time, at the end of five years, the company, if it's, it has to go reapply at the Board of Commerce and Industry again for approval.
And they'll have to justify the jobs that were created and prove.
It goes back to them in five years for a five-year renewal that they have to approve.
Thank you.
Fornum.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's only two of those options available to them. There's a 10-year tax exemption if approved for the second round.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure.
Get another dip in the well.
You, no, you, I think because for so long, up until 2016, there was this understanding that these were 10-year exemptions, but that's because they were so automatic. But the fact is, going back decades, it was always a five-year and then a five-year renewal. But they got approved so easily, it was almost an understanding of 10 years. It is still only a five-year renewal, or excuse me, approval. And then, that company has to go back to the board in five years, and it's not automatic. But I don't know if I understand your question beyond that.
I'm just saying that 10's still the cap.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
But it's always been two five-year.
You're, I'm, yeah, you're correct. There's no 11 through 15. 10 is still the limit.
I'd absolutely support this. And in our conversations in this, if an agency doesn't take any action at all, if they just decide not to vote on it at all, it's just like saying yes. So, now, the school board took action, and they said no.
Correct.
I'm assuming, hopefully, tonight, we say yes. I absolutely support this, because like Mr. Andrew Pont said, industry is our lifeblood around here, and none of us have the quality of life that we have today if it's not for them. So, I support this 100%. And I'm glad it's 80% also.
Mr. Scott.
Mr. Bean, do we have, I consider this smaller than some of the scales? How many other small ones like this do we have in our area? Can you guess? Any of them this small?
Well, the, you mean in the recent past? Because this is still relatively new to all of us to have local input. Over the years, yes, but I couldn't give you a honest, honestly, number.
I mean, other businesses, and I say 3.6 compared to billions and hundred million. So, 3.6, and you're asking for tax breaks for doing local business for 25 jobs? If, you know, there's other businesses around here that don't ask for that, they'd probably hire more than 25 people.
Yeah, I think, and I've had some good call, good questions from jurors on this one, and that's a good one. My answer is, the state sets the rules on it, and it does apply to certain types of industrial manufacturing. And I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm saying that if you are within those parameters, you're allowed to apply. It does not apply, for example, if you have a new business that creates, say, 30 jobs at a grocery store. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm saying that's the rules. And so, if you're a company, in this case, the industri, Instrument Valves Services, they have every right, and I could see an economic reason to apply. I think if you're, if you're saying, if there needs to be, or maybe it could be discussed to have a change in who's eligible, that would be a legislative discussion, and they'd have to change it at that level. But that's, we don't have that many overall, but yeah, this one is not in the billions, but it's...
But they'll probably have a lot more lineup after this one. Possibly.
Possibly, yeah. Hope so. It means we're growing.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Sorry about this, Ms. Kathy, but my speedy vice has already deleted the board. Can you tell me who made the motion in a second? So, we have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont to approve. Do we have any further discussion?
Talk about quick draw.
Any objection? Item carries. Eighteen, consideration of adopting an ordinance amending chapter 26 of code ordinances of Calcasieu Parish, Louisiana pertaining to the flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate map completed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA and effective on March 16, I mean, May 16, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Ms. Tremi. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Nineteen, consideration of adopting resolutions for each of the following items as requested by the Human Resources Department. A, approving a cost reimbursement agreement for participation in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP. And B, approving the memorandum of understanding for administration of the SNAP and E and T program. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Bears. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Twenty, take appropriate action on the following bids. A, Calcasieu Correctional Center and Administration Improvements Project. Staff recommends that the low responsible and responsive bid in the amount of $1,804,000, which includes the base bid, alternate number one of alternate number two of Pat Williams Construction LLC be accepted. B, Human Resources Department Renovations Project. Staff recommends that the low responsible and responsive bid in the amount of $1,363,000 of Gunner Construction, Inc. be accepted. C, governmental building chiller replacement and control upgrades project. The staff recommends that the low responsible and responsive bid in the amount of $1,175,700 of Alfred Palmer Construction be accepted. And D, Calcasieu Emergency Response Training Center HVAC replacement project. The staff recommends that the low responsible and responsive bid in the amount of $147,400 of Air Conduent LLC be accepted. I have a motion by Ms. Mayo and a second, I need a second.
Second.
And a second on Mr. Landry. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? Item carry. All bullets.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Abshar and a second by Ms. Tremi. We go adjourned.